I call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for May 6th, 2020. Please rise where you are for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement for Monroe Woodbury Central School District, we are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Put on your chat, if you may. Do we have a motion to approve the revised agenda? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Donna, are there any questions or comments from interested citizens that were emailed, sent in to the office?
There were no comments or questions from public citizens, no.
Thank you. Were there any, Elsie, any update on questions or comments raised from previous meetings?
No, we don't have any.
No, right.
We don't have any comments, or updates, rather.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16th, 2020 special meeting? I have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Opposed? So carried. We have an update on the Remote Learning Guide. Dr. Hassler, you want to present this, please?
Sure. Mrs. Rodriguez asked me if I would provide just an update and refresher regarding the Remote Learning Guide and the Remote Learning Center that we have on the district website. So I'm going to put my screen up. Can everybody see that? I'm on the district website, everybody's good? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So when, when we transitioned to new instruction last month, we created a, an updated area on the district website for kind of a consolidation of all the various resources that we have available to our families related to the COVID-19 closure. The, the way that you access that information is going to the district main page, and under Quick Links is a link called the Remote Learning Center. So if you click that link, it takes you to another website where we have a whole array of different sources of information for community members related to remote learning and pertinent information for the, the closure of, of the physical schools, but as well as the, the information available to families on how they can access different district resources, including all of the, the learning resources that we're providing to our students, as well as other things like food distribution, childcare updates, and things like that. We maintain this and update this on a regular basis as information becomes available. And that's part of the reason why we wanted to provide this update is to remind people that because this situation is continuously changing, we keep this information up to date so that families can feel comfortable when they come here that they're getting as current information as we can possibly provide. For example, as of last week, the State Education Department canceled August Regents exams. We're getting regular updates from the College Board regarding advanced placement exams and SAT exams. Last week, Governor Cuomo also made that, the announcement saying that the, the, our schools were going to be, our school buildings were going to be closed for the remainder of the school year, however, we're going to obviously continue to provide instruction. Also on the district website, on, on the, under this Remote Learning Center is the, the actual Remote Learning Guide, and I'm going to just click in that. What we started to do when we realized that we were making modifications in this guide fairly frequently is that we put a date on here, so that way when people access the guide, they would know how current the information in that guide was. For example, again, as I mentioned, the, the August Regents exams were canceled. We, we put links in there related to any new childcare providers that we receive. We, in the middle of the closure, we added Smith-Clove as a food distribution area. We included that information in the Remote Learning Guide, so that way when people access the guide, they'll be able to know how current the information is in here. There's an, an array of different information that we have included in here, including things like what the schedule is for information to be posted. I, I know a few weeks ago, everybody should have received information about a staggered schedule that we put together because we needed to create a more routine system for how things were getting posted, because we heard back from community members that things were gradually rolling in on a daily basis. So what we did was we created a staggered schedule, so that way students would know that when they logged in on a particular day, at a particular time, what information they should be expecting from their classroom teachers. All of the various schedules, the schedules broken down by K1, grades kindergarten through first grade, grades two through five, the middle school, and the high school. We have information in here about updated grading policies and the calculation of final averages at the secondary level. In the event that students aren't able to participate in remote learning, we have the attendance information. We have up-to-date information about standardized assessments. For example, as I said, we updated that the, the August Regents was, was canceled last week. We included in there information about the implications of, of those cancellations and links to the State Education Department on, on frequently asked questions on how does, how does the cancellation of these standardized assessments impact my particular child? We have information up here about the College Board and advanced placement exams. The, the, the College Board continues to provide information on various forms of information, including review courses that they're offering for students taking AP exams, demos on, on the portal for how students should be accessing the, the exams when they, when they take them at the end of the month, how services are being provided for special education students, academic intervention, English as a New Language students, online resources for parents. We also, you may recall, when we first closed school in the middle of March, we posted a variety of different academic resources. In addition to the information that you're getting from your child's teacher, we also have a variety of different apps and websites and, and other learning opportunities if you're looking for additional things for your children to do. As I, as I said, we have, our, our meal distribution information is posted there with all of the different collection, distribution times and locations, mental health and wellness. When I, when I go back to the, the Remote Learning Center, all of this information is also included in tabs across the top of the Remote Learning Center. Also included in here is information in the event that families are having difficulty with regards to accessing their child's Gmail account, because every time something is, is updated in Google Classroom, emails are sent to our students. How to access your child's Gmail account, how to access your child's, your, your child's teacher's Google Classroom, how to, how to use the variety of different apps that the teachers might be using at the elementary level. You can click the, the Tech Help link, and it'll take you to a form where you can submit a form, explain to them the type of difficulty that you're having, and somebody from our Micro Computer Center will get back to you. Similar to what was included in the, the Resource Guide, the staff availability schedule is there, the academic resources are there, the various testing updates that I spoke about, food distribution, the mental health and wellness information, mental health and wellness information, the childcare opportunities that we have. So, once again, I, I want to reinforce that this loc, this, this location on our district website is updated regularly, almost daily, and, and I encourage community members that may have any sort of questions related to anything that they, you know, that they may have, they can certainly check in here, they can certainly reach out to any, any of us or their, their child's administrator, or their child's building principal, or their teacher with regards to any, any other questions that they may have.
So I, I had asked Eric to do that because I had been receiving questions regarding this Remote Learning Guide, or they had, they had specific questions, and I keep sending families to this website, so I thought it was really important for us to do that. The other thing I wanted to share was that one of the requirements of all school districts is that we're required to complete something called the Continuity, Continuity of Instruction Plan, and that's on our, our New York State portal. And so just to give everybody an idea, there are 11, there are a total of 12 questions, and the questions start, you know, are, are framed in certain items. For example, there's a piece on learning materials, like what sort of learning materials are students going to get? What kind of communication do we have? What kind of teacher-student interface do we have? What methods of instruction? And I just wanted to speak a little bit about the methods of instruction. We, as a district, took an incremental move onto eventually having what we have now, which is some teachers are doing live instruction, and people use the word "live instruction", and for us at SCD, it's called synchronous, right? So what we have is some teachers use synchronous, so they have a group of students, and they meet them at 10 o'clock, and they do a whole class lesson. Other teachers decide that they're going to use a video, so a teacher will take a video, they will post it, and then they have, and I think Eric mentioned this, they have office hours. So we took a very multi-pronged approach to providing this for our students. In addition to that, we also have students that even though we can provide them with a Chromebook, are still having great difficulty accessing wireless internet. And so we create packets, and we deliver these packets to their homes. And so I, I just wanted to share with the community that what we're doing is multiple ways of reaching students. And to say that we would have a synchronous, so everybody meets at 10 o'clock, you know, at this time, and every student is very difficult for a school district like us, because what I shared, and Bargov can speak a little bit about it, when we left on March 12th, we were not poised to give every student in the district a Chromebook, right? That's a process, and so I'm just going to ask Bargov, if you would, just to talk about, because we did have a technology plan, it wasn't as though we weren't planning this, we were planning this, and, and so we had to fast-track it. Bargov, do you want to speak about that?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. So the technology plan, we were planning for our rollout of the more devices, but in, in, if you remember, about four years before, I did a brief presentation to the board about the internal network and, and what was the status of the network. Then we applied for the Smart School Bond, and ultimately, once we received the Smart School Bond, we were able to upgrade our network. So without having a really good network, it was not worth it for us to start deploying the more devices. And, and the main, the other reason is also, if we have more devices and if there is no connectivity, we would hear a pushback from the students and teachers. So finally, we were able to finish, at the end of the summer, early September, we finished the, the entire rewiring of all the district classrooms and all the district IT closets. And then the thought was at this end of this year, early next year, we would start deploying the, the devices per grade level, so that we can add more devices to our district. Now, fast forward, because of COVID-19, we have expedited that process, and we are working on the plan. The, the goal is basically, and, and in the last six to eight weeks, we have actually deployed, we have loaned the 555 Chromebooks to our students who needs that. So that addresses some of the concern or some of the issues, there are a lot of provider, the internet providers that has, that have extended their free Wi-Fi to the students, but they're also on the backlog. So there, there are a variety of different constraints to the process. However, we are, we are also working on the bigger plan to say, what can we do to make sure that, that we deploy more devices to our students? So that plan is, is work in progress, and in a very short future, we will bring it to the board as well.
Thanks, Bargov. The other thing I should note is that I mentioned to the board, and actually mentioned to the community, that I met with Regent Wills, who is a representative for our school district. And one of the things that she is pushing, she believes that wireless internet is something that every home should have, that it should be a given, that every household has wireless internet, because without that piece, we're really going to see the inequities among students in our district. So she is pushing at the legislative level to, to ensure that as we move forward, every, every child has wireless access to wireless internet, because now it means access to school. So, so I was very happy to hear that, hear from her. Any questions? I saw that there was a question about how much traffic have we had on that website? I'm not really sure. I, I, here's, Dan, I think you asked a question, one of the things that I knew that it wasn't getting a lot of traffic was because I was receiving a lot of questions about information that's on that learning guide. So I thought it was really relevant to have Dr. Hassler present that today, but I'm not really sure how much, and maybe Bargov can...
Elsie, can I, can I, yes. So we have turned on the Google Analytics on that site since the, the, after I think three days of the site was up. So Dan, I don't have the exact information, but we can get back to you with the specific type of the data that we gather on the traffic.
Thank you.
Okay. Lorraine, you had a question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I couldn't get unmuted. So you mentioned two ways that the teachers are reaching the students, and one is synchro, what did you call it?
Well, they, they use, parents will use the word "live," meaning that they set a meeting up and they meet with the students.
Like a face-to-face.
So it's, it's, that's called synchronous, and the other way is asynchronous, and videos, and, and packets. Some people are reaching out to their students via the telephone, so there's multiple ways, and I just wanted to share the multiple ways that we're doing that.
So if there have been students that have not had any interaction, would they have to go on to the school link?
You mean if students haven't been able to connect with their teachers, but yet they have a Chromebook and they have access?
So...
Correct. So one of the things that I, that I asked the teachers to do last week, once we knew that this was going to be extended for the remainder of the year, is that I asked the teachers to please do what we call a check and connect once a week with the students, meaning that they put all the students together and they just check, check to see how the students are doing. Because one of the things that I've heard from both parents and students and teachers is that one of the most effective ways is to actually just talk to the kids and see how they're doing, because we do know, and I see Maeve shaking, shaking her head, we do know that there is a really, there's an important part to the social-emotional connection, that having students being at home, they need to have that social-emotional connection. So my, I asked them, and I know that several teachers have already reached out to families, "I want to meet with you, I want to meet with the students," and it's really to give the students an opportunity to see one another, or to ask questions, or for the teachers, as I, I often say, "Put eyes on the students." So, so yes, Lorraine, to your question, they are going to be doing that weekly.
Okay. So that would be moving forward. There, there are some that have not had that interaction, correct?
I, I think there might be some teachers that have not, I mean, I've, I believe that that's, some teachers have not, some teachers have chosen, as I said before, what they do is they post a video of themselves, and Maeve could probably talk about that a little bit later, they post a video, and then they have what we call virtual office hours, and some kids have said, some students have said, they, they like that, because they can take the video that's been posted and they can re-watch it multiple times. So absolutely, that there's, there's multiple ways of doing this, and it really depends upon the student, the grade, and I, so I think that the approach that we've taken, which is multiple ways of reaching, reaching out to students, is really beneficial, because it allows for the diversity of our students and the diversity of our teachers. But the one thing moving forward is that the teachers will reach out, as I said, for a check and connect once a week.
So I just have one more. How about, how are we reaching the students who is a virtual, who is a visual learner? And maybe getting their instruction through this, you know...
Maeve looks like she wants to say something.
Yeah, I'll comment on that. So a few of my teachers, and this is actually how I like to be taught, a few of my teachers have been doing like a screencast, so it's just their voice, and then they write on, like, it's almost like a whiteboard but on the computer, and then they'll be writing out the problems, or like this and that, and they'll be explaining it to you at the same time. So it's like you're adjusting class, you just can't see them.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Maeve.
Of course.
All right. Anything else?
Anything else on this, from anybody?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Wait, I have a question. I just wanted to know if we are able to track that? Can we track to see? Because obviously, there's always parents out there that claim their kids are not having any interaction, and that could be skewed, because kids and parents, there's a disconnect. Is there a way for us to track to say, if, if a parent complains about a teacher, is there a way for Bargov, for us to look into the system and say, "Listen, I understand your concern, you need to talk to your student," because we have verified that the teacher has reached out to every kid, or the teacher has had these things? If your child is not cooperating, you know, in this process, can, can we just verify that the teachers are doing what we're saying?
We, 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 there, there is always ways to be able to verify that. I think one of the things that I've learned from this is that there's a lot of information, new information that's being learned and ways of doing it. So yes, if a parent calls a principal or emails a principal and says, "Look, I'm really concerned about this," whatever their concern is, sure, there's a way to reach out to the teacher, and there's a way for, for, for us to know whether the teacher has or has not. Our goal is to really, one of the most important things that we could do now is really support our, our classroom teachers, so that they become more comfortable doing this. As you, as you heard, Maeve had, you know, has people that they don't show their face, and I think there's always that sense of concern. And so what I like for us is that we have done this incrementally, making sure that people feel comfortable, providing professional development for our teachers, and so I just wanted to share that. But your, to your question, Chris, yes, there's always a way of, of, you know, of, of knowing whether people are on or not on. Any other questions? Okay. Now it goes to you, John.
Thank you, thank you, Eric, and, and Elsie. First reading of a policy manual update. Chris, you want to talk to us about the three policies on the agenda?
Yes, the three policies are basically 8625, they're dealing with privacy and security for the student's teacher in the principal data, since everything is now computerized. We started to look in to make sure that all the, the data and security resources that we have at the school are backed up, so that we're not losing anything in the information world out there. 8630 is the same, computer research and data management, and 8635 is information security breach notification. These are all things that the school has in place for the safety of the students, and all the information for everyone in the district. So we just kind of sent it out, the lawyers got back to the recommendations, we looked at Ms. Bar, so these are the first three readings. We're going to go, I believe, if Elsie wants to join in, 8635, I think there's going to be a regulation that they're working on for the next meeting, that's just to verify a few things that we didn't like, they're just fine-tuning them, but that's not going to affect the actual policy, it's just the way we do business.
Bargov, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. So, so basically, the policy 8625, all these three policies are in direct response of, of Ad-Law 2D Regulation 121. This was adopted in earlier this year. Technically, the Ad-Law 2Ds have been around since 2014, but the state actually updated the regulations, called Part 121, and this allows the school district to make sure that we protect the PII, Personally Identifiable Information, for all our stakeholders. As a school district, we do collect a lot of data, but also, we have a lot of third-party contractors that, that we do work with them, so we give that data to those third-party contractors. And, and really, this policy has helped us to make sure that we protect it, but also we make the contractors inform and liable if something happens. So the policy 8625, basically, it talks, it talks about the data privacy standards that includes the NIST cybersecurity framework, this is a framework that's been around, you know, for a while, it's now version 1.1, and this is very common in a private businesses. So I'm actually happy to see that this is actually coming into education, gives us more, more authority to basically protect our data a little bit better. This also talks about the, the appointment of Data Privacy, Data Protection Officer, which as a board, you will be doing in our reorg meeting in July, and, and it helps us to basically, the third-party contractors, to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do, in case if we don't use them year after year. Policy 8630, it talks about the computer resources and data management, this talks, it talks about the, our current acceptable use policy and our related changes to the new Ad-Law 2D Part 121. That includes the system administration, separation of duties, remote access, backups, including our email archiving and records and retention, so, and, and the disaster recovery. So as a district, we follow a New York State ED1 standard for the records and retention. So for example, emails are archived for seven years, if it's apparel data, the retention time is 55 years, if it's a purchase order data, it's six years. This policy eventually will replace our existing policy 8270. And Policy 8635, it talks about the information security breach, it, it talks about what is the data breach, what is the identity of, how do we, how do we identify the data breach, what steps the school district needs to take if there is a data breach, who needs to be involved, what protocol we need to follow, and ultimately, this policy will replace the existing policy 5672.
Thank you, Bargov. Do we have a motion? Are there any questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of those policy manual updates? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? So carried.
John, can I, can I interrupt for one second? I apologize. But Lorraine asked a question, and I don't think that I fully answered it, so of course, I, I just want to go back to your question, Lorraine, and you asked about students who need additional support. One of the things that should be noted is that we have our teaching assistants and our monitors work with students if they so need that. So just, I just wanted to make sure that I shared that too, because I didn't say that. So just wanted to put that out there. All right. Sorry, John, thanks.
No, no problem, thank you. The second reading...
Thanks.
About petty cash funds and cash in school buildings, this is a second reading, so do, do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the policy manual update 5530? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Fine, opposed? So carried, reports by the Board of Education Committees. Chris, anything on policy that you want to add? No? Okay.
No, thank you, we got it all. Sorry, I had to unmute, mute back up.
I know, I got your gesture, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. Dawn, anything on visitation or Orange County School Boards Association?
Visitation, unfortunately not, and Orange County's meeting is tonight, which if we finish early, I will join them.
Right, it's, it, yeah, it starts at 7:00. Unfortunately, our board meetings tend to correspond with theirs. Dawn, facilities?
If Patrick has any updates, we did not have a meeting, but I don't know if Patrick has any updates.
Patrick, do you have anything?
The only thing I would add, John, is that I had mentioned this in the past, the, the connector ramp that we're building between the, the football field, the stadium field, and the upper field, that's probably going to start sometime in early July. We're allowing LAN architects, LAN and associates to manage the, the bid on that, and we're going to have the bid opening on June 10th, and... And, um, we're going to have the bid opening on June tenth and hopefully, um, award that contract at our June, uh, seventeenth meeting. And as I said, start it early July and finish it probably within a couple of weeks. But it, it should be a nice, nice pathway. It's both for pedestrians and the cross-country course and team. Uh, we're going to have railings on both sides. It should be fairly wide. And, uh, and flare out at the bottom on the, uh, stadium side to allow the cross-country, um, team to, to utilize that without too hard of a, of a turn, depending on which way they're running. So, so that's really the only thing that's going on in the facilities world. Uh, I see a question. Any word on track completion? Uh, um, yes, we, um, we have given them the, uh, them meaning applied landscape technologies, the, the go-ahead to, to finish the track anytime they can schedule it. And, um, and so we're, we're waiting on that. I, I believe we did get a, a earlier date. You know, if you recall, we were going to wait until after graduation for that, let the spring sports and graduation occur and then work on that. So, um, we're going to try to get that done as soon as we can.
Lorraine has a question.
Hi, Pat. Um, a few meetings ago, I had mentioned or asked about, um, having the playground or a playground with some sensory, uh, ish functions on there or some, something for students with, uh, sensory issues to have, integrate a sensory, I don't know what you would call it, program area to existing playgrounds or creating?
Well-
Are you guys looking into that?
I, I gotta be honest, we, we have had our hands full with everything that's been going on. But what I will do is I will, um, I'll discuss that with the facilities director, Peter. And, um, and we can, we can pick that up. I mean, I, you know, th- there's been just so much going on, Lorraine, that, uh, and, and we, the time to do it is when we were talking about the CV, um, playground, when we did, redid that recently, and I think that's when it came up. Um, so, so we would, we'll look into that for sure. And, and, uh, if and, if and when we, we do, uh, some facilities investments in that area, we'll, we'll certainly add that as a part of that.
Well, I would think that since there are facilities for, you know, the general population, it's not anything really remarkable, I don't believe. You know, we're talking about little areas that may have, um, beans or something in it. So, you know, kids put their hands in beans, that's part of sensory, it's part of OT. It's not anything that's extravagant.
Okay. Can I just jump into that, to that? Because I do want to say something. One of the things that our school buildings, especially our elementary buildings, they have been have, they have been, um, dedicating rooms to, to, to be sensory rooms. So I think, Lorraine, what you're saying is take that approach that you have in the building and use some of those approaches outside. Patrick, let me, let me share, let me say this. I think that one of the things I'd like to do is take that on with the building principals. Because it, it's not something that, that is major. We just need to look at it with a different, with a different lens. And I'll, I'll speak with the building principals and say how, what are some of the things that you, you can do? And we can even work with SEPTA as well, because they've always been very supportive of the school buildings. And talk about what are some of the things that we can do? And then we'll address that at the building level.
Yeah, I think it's something that you just have to get creative. It's nothing that is expensive.
Right. I mean, we've done it in our buildings and so taking that concept to be able to have something similar to that. I think, uh, you know, when the students are outside in the playground.
Totally.
That, that sounds good. What, what I, what I had envisioned was, um, and, and so I understand now better, Lorraine, what you had in mind was, was playground equipment, which can be sort of a, uh, a, a, a big investment and, and takes some time and energy. But you're, you're talking about something that could be smaller and skimped down.
Oh, absolutely. Totally.
And I think I can work with, I can work with the building principals and the directors to do that.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Um, we have now a report by student representative, Maeve Harrington.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Okay, so first off, I'd like to start by saying happy teacher appreciation week. I understand that the online learning is a learning curve for them too, and I appreciate their patience and showing that they care. Um, to give a little insight on the remote learning from a student's perspective, I'd say that the workload has definitely lightened since, uh, mid-March. And I think it's important to note that, um, us as students are only going to be as organized and as motivated as our teachers are. And if a teacher is to show frustration through an assignment, that it's, it's hard for us to keep motivated. Um, I'd like to give a special shout out to a few of my teachers. Uh, my AP Euro teacher, Mr. Lee, my AP Lit teacher, Mrs. Bowler, and my physics teacher, Mrs. Bates. They're doing an awesome job and they're maintaining consistency with delivering material and take the stress and confusion out of online learning. So keep it up, guys. And I think I can speak on behalf of all of the senior class when I say we're absolutely devastated that we are missing out on the best few months of our entire thirteen-year school career. And, um, as we've already missed decision day and could potentially miss more, um, I definitely feel for my artistic friends who are missing their senior art show. For my theater friends who are missing their senior show. And for my athletic friends who are missing their senior night and last game. And lastly, I would like to say, I know this is a tough time for everybody and we're all struggling. Um, so I'd like to show my appreciation for teachers, students, and board members alike, and let you know that none of your work goes unnoticed. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Maeve, I just wanted to ask how you feel any of the plans are going as far as the seniors are concerned, um, for the end of year, uh, item?
So I've had a lot of my friends ask, like, if we're going to be doing something like, not technically a graduation, but maybe like a drive-through graduation, maybe like a parade or something like that. So I think they're just looking for alternatives as to what would have been. I don't know if that answered your question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, yes, and, um, John Casti and everybody are, are looking into alternatives.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, John, just to echo what, what Maeve said is I think the students just want things, they want to hear about it. And so, um, I reached out to Mr. Casti and I sort of, um, pulled his arm and said, let's do a video together. So I'm hoping that on Friday, Maeve, um, Mr. Casti and I, and if he's watching, he's going to be really mad. But we're, we're going to do a video and just talk about senior stuff.
Right.
Um, because we really want to answer your questions. So that's, that's the goal.
Nice, yeah. And, and I don't know if you guys saw the other day on decision day, um, a few of the high school teachers threw together a little video.
We did.
Yeah, yeah, it was awesome. It had me and my mom sobbing because we had just found out that it was canceled. Oh, it was great, great.
We actually got a link, uh, my daughter got a link that Michelle and Barack Obama are going to do-
Yeah.
A senior-
First repeat to that. It's on May sixteenth and it's going to be like a live, um, a live graduation.
Commensment, yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's nice. What was the date again, Maeve?
Um, I believe it's Saturday, May sixteenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
All right. Um, we have a motion. We need a motion to approve the revisions to the schedule of Board of Education meetings for the remainder of two thousand nineteen, uh, twenty-twenty academic year. We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, and all those in favor? All right, those opposed? So carried. Um, now that we've passed it, are there any questions?
Um, let's see if I'm, I'm, I'm off. I, I did want to mention something and, and I wanted to mention it to the community as well. That this is a result of the governor's ex, um, executive order that he, that he, um, sent out on Friday at five o'clock. And so many school districts, including Monroe Woodbury, are now faced with a vastly different, um, ballot process. Um, and so there's, there's some concern about this process. First of all, we're going to be mailing probably somewhere, Donna, correct if I'm incorrect, about twenty-five thousand ballots and we're required to send a ballot to every qualified, to, to every qualified, um, uh, voter. And it has to be an individual one. And so we have to not only send them the ballot, but we also have to send them a self-addressed envelope. And then there's another piece that we're required to do, which is different, which is, um, uh, mail out a postcard. So there's, there's been a lot of change that happened from last Friday to today that, that forced the board to meet yesterday to talk about the new dates. Um, and so there's, there's some concern. And I, I just did want to share my concern also about the integrity of the process. But, but we are required to follow the governor's executive orders. Um, Patrick, I don't know if anybody else wants to discuss or share anything regarding this process.
The only thing I would add, Elsie, um, is the, um, the information we received from the Division of Budget saying that the, uh, this, the decision about, um, state aid, where state aid will ultimately land and what it'll look like for districts would come out on or about May fifteenth. So most districts were, were under, you know, the, uh, the advice to wait. And, and so there were a few conflicts with this, uh, budget calendar that we had to manage. There's the new process of the ballots. So there's a lot of moving parts this year and it's really compressed the schedule. Uh, so we, we're going to wait until May fifteenth. Let's say we understand what's happening with the, um, state aid situation. And, and so this would be the second cut to state aid. We, when the governor's initial proposal came out in January, we had state aid numbers. And then by the time the state agreed on the budget, um, they had changed those numbers and they had frozen state aid at current year level. So that was a cut. And this would be a second cut to state aid, which, uh, just creates tremendous uncertainty for everybody. Um, so we're proposing that we have our meeting on May eighteenth, when we finally know, uh, where we're going to stand. And then I have the board adopt the budget on the nineteenth. And I know it's a very compressed schedule, but we just felt it was prudent to, to sort of know where everything was going to, how it was going to shake out before we made any of, uh, of these final decisions. And hopefully, uh, it will not be the twenty percent cut in state aid the governor originally proposed or lobbed out there at one of his press conferences. Um, because we've said that before, that would be really, uh, a devastating and catastrophic, um, hit to every school district nearly in, in the state.
All right. Thank you.
I just, I just have two comments. So the first comment is in regards to the actual voting process. Um, I know that I expressed last night that I certainly am not happy with the governor's order that he's put down for the voting method that we're going to, um, be dealing with. But with the same thing, I'm just asking the general public that may be actually watching this video, the importance of the vote. Um, and to make certain that every member that's in your household is utilizing their right to their vote. Um, I know that's something that we discussed last night, like my family will have three votes mailed to my house. So I will be certain that all three are returned to the district so that all three votes will count. So that's the first part. And then the second part is, Patrick, can you talk a little bit, there's been some communication going on as to perhaps some of the savings that the school district may have had over these last few weeks, since we have not physically been in the building? Um, and I, can you just kind of address that a little bit as to, you know, what's exactly happening with some of those monies?
Sure. Um, so, um, as part of, uh, our budget, we, we use fund balance, which is sort of like the savings of the district. Um, for next year's budget, we had, even before, you know, we got really tight here and in this real crazy situation, we had agreed that we would need to use more fund balance than we traditionally would or typically would use. Uh, and, and use of reserves as well, which are like savings accounts for specific purposes. So additional use of reserves and fund balance for next year, that was always in the, in the plan. Um, you know, since things got really uncertain and we're hearing some of these, um, these big cuts in state aid, uh, we're, we're going to take what we've been saving, saving in, with the closure in this year and apply that to next year's budget. So we were going to increase the use of fund balance for next year's budget. We're going to increase that even more. And, and some of that funding will come from, that surplus will come from savings that we're experiencing with the closure. Now, the, the caveat with the closure is we're, we're not saving as much money as people may think. We, we're still basically open. The school buildings are closed, but school is open. Uh, teachers are teaching. Um, we're having school, people are working remotely, they continue to be paid. We have salary expenses, we have contractual expenses. So there are some savings. But it's not as though there, there, uh, are no expenses associated with running the school district. And, and that was one of those things. I've gotten emails, uh, Stacy, you've, I guess you've heard from the community. That was one of the things that we intended to do and, and we're just going to accelerate or increase that use of fund balance to balance next year's budget. The, the other thing we've had to do with the budget and, and we've, we've been doing it, we may need to do more of this is uh, decrease the appropriation side. And appropriations is just a fancy name for the budget. So you have your revenue budget, which is what we're talking about, using fund balance, using reserves to balance the budget. And we have our expense side of the budget, the appropriation. So we're working on both areas to maintain our programs, maintain our school district. Um, you know, and, and just sort of have the status quo, if you will. Um, a lot of districts, I think, are, are potentially worried that they're going to have to do layoffs, they're going to have to make some really dramatic cuts. We, I think we're in sort of a standby mode to see what the ultimate, uh, state aid numbers look like before we have to make any decisions like that. But, um, you know, again, as it stands now, we, we are, we're not giving that money back as a check, as a refund to people, the savings that we're, uh, experiencing now. But we are in a sense giving it back because we're applying it to the budget for next year.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more thing too? Sorry. Um, this is what happens when you're talking from home, the doorbell rings. Um, just very quickly, uh, we also had unexpected, um, expenditures, right? We, we, we have, you know, uh, Mr. Vias is talking about additional Chromebooks that we need to purchase, right? We, we had a plan and now we have to alter our plan and incur some additional costs that we weren't anticipating as well. So I just wanted to share that too.
Great point.
All right, thanks. Um, next we have, uh, we need a motion to establish the Board of Education meeting calendar for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Do I have a, um, a motion? I have, do I have a second? Do I have a second? I have a second. All, oh, I sound like an auctioneer. All those in favor? All right, opposed? Uh, so carried. Uh, personnel, Matt?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, before I ask for approval for the items listed under personnel, um, I just want to recognize those people who have their retirement letters in and they're on tonight's agenda. Uh, the, the five people who are there have over one hundred years of experience just in our district. So a big thank you to, to the five of them. And then two spots down, when we look at the certified appointments, we do have some, some new hires coming in. Uh, they have very large shoes to fill, um, already. But I wish all of them luck. And so I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Do I have a motion? And do I have a second? Actually, I didn't have a motion. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Um, so carried. Thank you, Matt. Uh, uh, business and financial, Patrick? Patrick, are you there? Is this something on my end or is it?
I think he's, I think he's finding his unmute button. But Lorraine has a question and I'm not sure if Lorraine's question on, is on what you just approved.
I am here, John. Sorry about that. I got like three screens.
Yeah, um, John, you asked for a motion before any questions. Or did I miss that?
Um, oh, questions on personnel?
Yes, you, I don't think you asked that question. I think you went right to motion.
Right, do you have any, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Okay, so my question is, if we had just recently hired a teacher for the nineteen, uh, the nineteen, look where I am, the two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty year, how are they being, uh, you know, uh, you know, ten years, three years, four years down the road? But how are we looking at teachers now with this remote learning? How is that happening?
That's, do you want me to take that or? Do you want me to take that or?
Yeah, you could take it. But it's a good question.
That is a good question. So just so you know, a lot of things have been, basically at the state level have been put on hold, including APPR and the use of formal observations, because you have a large number of people and teachers across the state who weren't even formally observed prior to all of this, because everyone has a full year to get their observations in. Going back to what Chris had said in his question earlier about, you know, working with teachers and looking at and seeing how they're doing, those, I will say, I think our building principals and assistant principals and department chairs are working as hard now as they ever have to connect with their staff and to make sure that they need the, you know, whatever supports they have or whatever supports that they need that they can get. So a lot of it comes down to, hey, teachers, you know, show me what you're doing. Let me see what, you know, what's going on. But the formal observation process doesn't really happen at this point. For us, fortunately, we've had our formal observations for all those who are probationary staff, because we've already had our probationary staff review. So what we do at the start of the year is we put a timeline or a calendar out for all of our probationary staff and for administrators to adhere to, to make sure that they have all the necessary observations. So even though this happened in March, those formal observations, the media reviews for probationary people, those were already all done. So we were ahead of the game when it came to that.
And I just want to jump in. Yeah, I just want to say one thing about this as well. So the governor is the person who, it was his executive order, APPR came from the governor's office. And so we're waiting, one of the things that we've asked the governor is to give us clarification on all of this. We're still waiting for him to give us clarification too. So it's a question that we've asked as well, but only the governor can give us that information. And we have not received any clarification.
Got it, because we really don't know what's going to even happen this fall.
Nope. So we await for the governor to give us a response.
Any other delayed questions that I might have missed? Okay, now business and financial, Patrick.
Okay, thanks, John. So I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under the Business Financial section of the agenda, which include one donation of $1,000 from Glenmark Pharmaceuticals to offset costs associated with our food distribution service or efforts. We appreciate their generosity greatly. It's always nice to get that kind of donation. We have obsolete items for your approval, technology devices and assets from the MCC. We have two contracts, one agreement with GNR Inclusive Group for virtual workshops and staff development for instructional staff. And we have an agreement with the town of Woodbury to share appraisal and related costs in the defense of the ELT harem and tax searchary case. We have one bid award recommendation and it's actually not an award. It's a recommendation for no award. And what we're going to do is kind of go back to the drawing board. This was for transportation for non-public schools. And I think what we're going to do is redo that procurement as a request for proposal, an RFP, and revise budget calendar.
Thank you. Any questions? We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you, Patrick. Do we have a, do I have a motion to approve the arrangement on the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education 16.1, 2.3, 4? We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Reports by Board and Central Office, Chris?
John?
Yes?
I'd like to make motion to forego reports by Board and Central Office unless somebody has something, you know, earth-shattering to reveal. I don't think there's much going on to just eat up time.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. I would like to say one thing. Since I'm the president, I just want to make people aware and thank Elsie for her twice-weekly videos to the community in this time. That's very, it's important because everyone is dislocated and isolated. And I think the district, everybody in the district, teachers, board members, administrators, need to reach out as much as possible and communicate with not only the students, but the community at large.
And can I say something before you? Can I just say congratulations to Maeve?
Yes.
Maeve decided to go to Penn State, is it?
Yes.
So we should congratulate her.
Aw, thank you. I appreciate that.
Happy birthday to Chris tomorrow.
Yeah, 39. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public portion of the meeting and convene into executive session for purposes of discussing contract negotiations? Oh, should we sing to Chris? No. We'll do that. That's an executive, that's an executive function. Anyway, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of adjourning into executive session? All right. This meeting is adjourned.